Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's January 17th, 2023 City of Casa Grande, City Council Meeting. And our first order of business is calling a meeting to order. And we also then have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Pastor Rutledge from St. Peter's Episcopal Church. Pastor, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. The Lord be with you. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, you declare your glory and show forth your handiwork in the heavens and in the earth. Deliver us in our various occupations from the service of self alone, that we may do the work you give us to do, and truth and beauty for the common good. And Heavenly Father, bless all who following in his steps give themselves to the service of others, that with wisdom, patience, and courage, they may minister in his name to the suffering, the friendless, and the needy, for the love of him who laid down his life for us, your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please show me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Lavender. All right, next item on our agenda is the minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the minutes for the City Council Special Meeting Minutes.
Wait, sorry. Roll call. Everyone's here? Please let the meeting minutes show that everyone is present.
So noted.
My bad.
I'm glad it was you and not me.
It was me. Minutes?
Yes, Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the minutes for the City Council Special Meeting on January 3rd. The City Council Regular Meeting Minutes on January 3rd. The Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Minutes on December 1st, and the Arts and Humanities Commission Regular Meeting Minutes on December 6th.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next item are claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims date of December 28th through January 10th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. Next, we have our meeting agenda. I do have one item that we're going to need to remove. It is on our consent agenda. It's item G5. Yes. So we can remove G5. Anybody else have any other changes, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder for the council that we are asking you to approve the meeting agenda with the amendment that was made on Friday to add a topic under special presentations.
Which you all should have a copy of. Okay. No other changes, I'll entertain a motion with said changes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda has been approved with said changes. Which brings us to one of the said changes. This is a presentation by Mark Reader of the Stifel Public Finance relating to the Lucid Motor Project. Larry, you want to introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to give a brief background before I ask Mark and Paul to come up to the podium. Roughly seven years ago, the project, which we know today as Lucid Motors, was introduced to Casa Grande, and there's been a number of individuals and organizations and entities that have played a vital role in bringing Lucid to our community, as well as the expansions that have transpired. And part of that partnership is with Penal County and their willingness to participate in the package that attracted Lucid here. And as part of the land acquisition that they made, that they actually leased to Lucid, that ultimately will be repaid by Lucid over a period of four years, there was a number of financing mechanisms that were necessary. And Mark and Paul were both very instrumental with the Penal County in seeing that through. And so they have asked if they could make a special presentation this evening. They've done something similar with the county. Obviously, the counties is very focused on the land acquisition. The city's obligations to that was primarily focused on public infrastructure. But I'll ask Mark and Paul to come to the podium and give a bit of an overview and introduce their gift this evening.
Don't call it a gift, Larry. We can't accept gifts. Boy, maybe you can, but not over certain amount.
Thank you, Mr. Rains. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Mark Reader with Stifel. I wanted to thank Larry for that introduction. We were, as Mr. Rains mentioned, very blessed to have a part in the financing for really Penal County, as you know, in which they acquired approximately 1,900 acres on which the Lucid Global Manufacturing Facility is headquartered here in Casa Grande. As he mentioned, we were involved in it for like really the last eight years. It was a long, long process, a very successful and a very transformational project for the city of Casa Grande and certainly for Penal County. So it was a lot of fun to be involved with, a lot of hard work, and we really felt privileged to be in the room with the participants. So we don't do this very often, frankly, but because of the transformational nature of this project, we prepared a memento. We did this, as Mr. Rains mentioned, for Penal County. And while we were putting that together, since the city of Casa Grande obviously was such an instrumental part of the program, we thought that we'd like to do the same thing for your city. I'm going to share this memento with you. We do have a copy of this for each member of the council, as well as certain members of the staff. And as you can see here, it's a very nice, what we call a memento, that outlines a little story about the project that perhaps you could, you know, put on the wall of your office at home or here at the city. And it's got a nice picture of Lucid. It's got the Penal County revenue bonds that we issued to acquire the land. And then in the middle here, we just, working with Mr. Rains, we just put it over here on the side, a few of the accomplishments. And if you don't mind, I just thought I'd read three or four of them. I'm not going to read them all, and I know that you're already familiar with this. But it says here that the city was a key partner in the planning, construction, and operations of the new Drive 48 Training Center, which features cutting-edge robots and training rooms for automotive and advanced manufacturing training. The city has been instrumental in assisting Lucid Motors with completing a state-of-the-art manufacturing plant for electric cars that further reimagines the driving experience. And several bullet points here on the positive economic impact on the county, the city, and the state, including employment of somewhere around 6,000 ultimately, when this thing gets built out and they're underway as we speak. And over the next 20 years, it's estimated that Lucid will support an average of 21,000 jobs annually, increase tax revenues by over 1.9 billion for the city, county, and state, and generate 256 billion of additional economic output. So I know council's familiar with all of those economics and those success points, but really, we just wanted to come down and present this to each member of the council and staff, and to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of the Lucid Global Manufacturing Facilities. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if we can get all the councils to come down, we actually, as Mark said, we have one for each of you. I think it'll be a little easier just to distribute.
Hey, Mark, I just want to add that actually, the people who most deserve this is staff and Larry. That's why his hairline is further back than it was eight years ago. But they do the heavy lifting, and we do appreciate it, Larry, to you and your staff. So, and to you too, Mark. Thank you. Thank you for the recognition.
Mr. Mayor, as the council's moving back to the dais, I would be remiss. The council's absolutely right. The staff had a key role in this, and it goes without saying that Stephen and Brett and Richard Wilkie and Paul Tice and Kevin Lewis, they've all worked very diligently. And obviously, we've got public safety and whatnot on the operational side that's transpiring. But it is truly a team effort on the part of the city, and certainly appreciate Mark and Paul for coming down tonight. They played a key role, particularly on the county side, with these financing packages of roughly $150 million. It's something that takes a lot of team effort and coordination, and just want to thank them for everything they did in making this come true.
Thank you, guys.
And Mayor, before we move on, you know, it's so hard to believe that, you know, you talk about the staff and everything that they've done, of course, the county and the state, but, you know, over seven years ago, this idea came, and I'll tell you, our staff always, you know, you just never know what that diamond in the rough is going to be, you know? And you guys treat a lot of these developers and businesses that are coming as though, you know, they're the next big project, and you always have done that with them. And we've had many, many years of, you know, discussions and, you know, everything, and you guys have...
Disappointments.
Yeah, exactly, disappointments. But in the end, you know, our staff did such a tremendous job on moving forward, and when you talk to Lucid, that was one of the reasons they came here too, because of our staff. So, you know, thank you for this recognition, but, you know, without our staff, we, you know, I mean, they were just so great working with Lucid and all the different partners, and it's just so exciting to see this. I, you know, was here from the very beginning, and you just never knew it was going to come about, and it's so exciting, and it's so exciting to see all the Lucid shirts around town and people that are working for Lucid, and it's changed their lives. So, you know, we're excited. We have a lot more coming, but, you know, I'm just so grateful to our staff and what they did to make this company feel so special and work with the partners. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is item G, our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these matters unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be pulled from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. We did remove G5, but other than that, does anybody have any changes? Anybody in the audience? Anybody from council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented with the deletion of G5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Right. The next item is item H, which is our public comments segment tonight. I don't have any speaking cards, but that doesn't mean that if there is someone here who would like to address the council, I would open the floor and allow you to do so. Just keep in mind that we have a three-minute limit, and the items that you might be addressing are not on the agenda, so therefore, we can't discuss them. But we can have somebody follow up with you. Is there anybody here who wants to address the council? He can speak on the item too, because I think it is, is it a public hearing? You can speak on the item if you want to wait. Okay. Or you can speak now too, it doesn't matter. All right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the floor, and we'll move on to item I, I1. Resolution number 5505. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Happy Martin Luther King Week. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the purchase of a 2022 Freightliner Heavy Duty Walk-In Rescue Apparatus. This is a replacement for our current Utility 504, which is housed at Station 504. The name's a little deceptive. This is actually not a rescue apparatus. This is, that's just a model number. This is what we use as our utility. It's our air light and basically our rehab unit. It has a large air conditioner on the top, and it's got a space in the back for the firefighters, you'll see. And also, you can see on the top part of it up there, there's also a lighting tower that can come up and put a significant amount of light on scene when we need it. This is essentially what we use as our rehabilitation unit at fire scenes, especially during the May to September timeframe, when it's really hot outside for the fires. This is a purchase, and it's $488,351. It's made possible through the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Agreement. It is a capital replacement, as I said, so it is a resolution. One significant thing about this, and I know we've all talked to you about this, it's 425 days till completion, once they get the order and start building it. So, that's longer than a fire engine used to take, and this isn't a fire engine, so, and fire engines are taking two, two and a half years now. So, significant time delay on these things because of still with the supply issues in steel and all that sort of stuff. We are receiving about a almost $19,000 discount for the prepayment discount on the total price, and that's about it. It is replacing, like I said, Utility 504 at Station 504. And that's all, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions, anyone? Matt, you have a question? Okay. All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5505, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Alexis Fire Equipment Company for the purchase of a 2022 Freightliner Fire Rescue Apparatus, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Alexis Fire Equipment, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution 5505 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yeah, I want to say thank you. This unit will be 24 years old when we replace it, so, older than all the kids that were here earlier. I like to see getting used to that stuff. Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
I just want to know, it says 2022, by the time we get it, it'll be 2024.
That is correct. It's actually interesting, because when you look at these yards where they're building these things, the frame's a 2022 frame.
So that's what they have to call it, is it 2022?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay. Yes. All right, item I2 is considered approval in Resolution Number 5506. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Cactus Asphalt, that's a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., to perform asphalt patching, crack sealing, rubber chip sealing, and restriping of pavement markings on the city streets as part of our rural road repair surface treatment project for our annual amount of $1.5 million. Staff is requesting authorization to use the Penal County Job Order Contract to procure this with Cactus Asphalt. Cactus has done quite a bit of work for us over the years and does a great job for us. So we're looking forward to having an opportunity to work with them this year on this portion of our pavement preservation program, which is focused on our rural roads. I will mention that one segment of this project, which is Peters Road from Thornton to Choo-Choo, that segment, the effort that we put into repairing that may change in the coming months. And if that happens, we'll be coming back for additional authorization to change the scope of that project. What has happened is with the rerouting of traffic in that area and the amount of rain that we've received, that roadway was never constructed to a level that could manage the truck traffic that it's seeing today. And if anybody's been out there, you can see just how much traffic is on that road these days. So it is deteriorating at a very quick rate, so the treatment that we had planned six months ago is no longer appropriate. So we're evaluating that right now, and we may be making changes, but I just wanted to make that note. So we did have $1.5 million in this year's budget for our pavement maintenance. The contract with Cactus is for $1,263,455. We also have a contingency of $236,545 in that project as well. So with the moving of prices and things like that, as well as not knowing what we might run into once we get into construction, we do want that buffer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And there was a map included in the RCA as part of your attachments.
Anyone? Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Not seeing any questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5506, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., for the rural road repairs and surface treatments project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt in accordance with the terms submitted to Penal County, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 5506 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is I3, another Resolution Number 5507. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a contract for construction manager risk services, GMP Number 1, for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, for an amount not to exceed $3,399,672, which includes a contingency of $427,572 for a total project contract of $3,563,100. Currently, we have Aiken Gardner is our SEMAR contractor for this project, and they've been working with our design firms to design the sewer interceptor, relief sewer for Quartzon. And we are working very quickly to try and get that to construction. And we're to the point in the design phase where we know what some of those long lead items are, so that we can get those ordered and get them on site, so that when the rest of the project is ready to go, those materials are on site and we can move forward. So this is GMP Number 1. We are going to be having two additional GMPs at this point, the way we're planning it, and the next one's going to be coming on the heels of this one, and that'll be for some of the pump and electrical equipment that also has some long lead items, but we're not sure exactly what we need yet, because we're not that far in our design, but we're close. So that will be forthcoming. Again, these are the items that we need to get ordered today. A majority of the project is the pipe that we're going to be using, and we're ordering that now because of that lead time. And again, this is the relief sewer that is basically going to be going from a lift station that's in the Henness Quartzon area, we're still working on the exact location, and then running all the way to our existing treatment plant. And it'll relieve a lot of the sewer lines that are within that corridor. So we'll actually have, at one point, three sewer lines all working in conjunction to serve the city. And this is in our effort to stay ahead of the growth in the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Was this part of the $40 million upgrade, or is this an addition to?
It's all part of that package that Brian McBride presented. This is the Quartzon Relief Sewer. We also have the plant expansion, and then the other sewer lines to the west, to the industrial areas.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Lavender?
Kevin, do you see Quartzon Road being reduced to two lanes as part of this project at any time?
It will definitely be impacted, but right now, we're not sure to what extent. The good thing about the design that we're looking at right now is a lot of it can be jack and board. That's where we actually put the line in underground and not have to do the open excavation. Now, we are going to have areas where we have to do open excavation just because of utility conflicts and some other complexities that we get into, but for the majority of it, we're going to have bore pits, and in those areas, we may have lane restrictions. But we're going to be trying to impact that roadway as little as possible during this project.
Thank you. Lisa?
And, you know, I know we've talked about this for years, so I know it's something definitely needed at this point, but, you know, you talk about the size of the pipe and everything going through, so, and I know it's hard to say how far into the future is this going to take us, but can you kind of give me an idea of like how, you know, what you're thinking at this point? I know it's hard, we don't have a crystal ball. I know that, but...
Let me get my crystal ball out. It really, there are so many variables, that is a very difficult question to answer. If, and I think council's been provided some information about a potential wastewater treatment plan on the east side of I-10, that could change everything for us. And so it's hard to answer that question, but ultimately, we looked at this sewer main upgrade in Quartzon, and then eventually, another sewer, main relief sewer going down rodeo. That may still need to happen and probably will, but my guess is, at the pace of construction right now, we're probably looking 20 years out, would be my best guess.
Any other questions?
I'm writing it down right now, Kevin. No, thank you. I know that's tough.
You'll be termed out by then. All right, any other questions? Sorry, I couldn't resist. Uh, all right, seeing no more questions, then I will call for resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number five five zero seven, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Aiken Garden Construction, LLC, to provide construction manager act risk services for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Construction Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five five zero seven as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda is item L, and these are public meetings, public hearings, uh, open records reviews, closed record reviews, and our first item on the agenda is item L one. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of resolution number five five zero three. This is authorizing, uh, park name change from College Park to Pratt Park.
Good evening, council. So in July of last year, city council authorized the renaming opportunity for College Park. City staff noticed this request and received two nominations for Pratt Park and Kaywood Park. The nomination packets are included in your agenda items tonight. As part of the renaming process, the two nominations requests were heard by the Community Services Advisory Board on October twenty-seventh for their recommendation. The board recommended that both nomination requests be carried forward. On November twenty-eighth, the Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing regarding the renaming of College Park. Both applicants presented their nomination requests, and the Historic Preservation Commission recommended city council approve the renaming of College Park to Pratt Park with a five-one vote. So council options tonight are, one, to improve the request. By approving this request, College Park will be renamed to Pratt Park. You could request the renaming to Kaywood Park. You can deny the request, and by not, by denying this request, College Park would stay as College Park. Or you could table this request to a later date. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions on council? Lisa?
No questions, but just a comment. Obviously, I mean, it's very well deserved, and I, you know, thank the Pratt family for being here. Um, you know, Frank Pratt was a, you know, a huge asset to our community, he's done so many things, so, um, and I, but I did also want to thank the person that nominated Kaywood, um, again, and a longtime family in the, um, agriculture community, so, um, but I'm, I'm happy to see that, you know, both were, were, you know, strong community members, but, um, but I'm happy to see that Frank Pratt will be, uh, the name will be after him. So thank you, thank you for being here.
Bob?
Uh, again, just a co-, uh, comment, I, I think it's very fitting. Uh, Frank, uh, was a great public servant. Um, one of, one of his specialties to me is that he always showed up. Uh, if council had a question, uh, of what was going on in the, in the state legislature, um, one phone call and he'd be here. Uh, saw him at all public events, especially parades, uh, he was always there. And this particular park is, uh, is in his neighborhood, and so I think it's very fitting and very appropriate, and, and I'll be supporting it.
All right, thank you, Bob. Matt?
Just to echo a bit, but like, uh, Mr. Powell spoke at the historic preservation, um, the Kaywoods are very deserving. Uh, Tommy, Sammy Kaywood lived, lived here forever and, um, did a lot of good community service, and it's not that they don't deserve to have something named after them, but this park in particular is Frank's neighborhood. I mean, he always lived in College Park area, so I think it's very fitting and maybe some other opportunity, or another opportunity will come up, I'm sure, for, for the Kaywoods like that, but it just makes sense for the Pratt Park because that's his home, home turf, so to speak, so.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing no more comments or questions from, here, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I am going to open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on this item. This is, uh, again, on authorizing a park name change from College Park to Pratt Park. And please keep your comments to three minutes, there is a timer up there, and, uh, give us your names and your address, and, uh, we'll let you know when your time is up.
Thank you. Well, good evening, honorable mayor, mayor, city council members, staff, guests, and everyone here tonight. We just wanted to express our heartfelt thanks for this lovely gesture, and just to personalize it for you, I wanted to let you know that we moved into College Park on June thirtieth, nineteen ninety. It was a hundred and twenty degrees. Do you remember that? So it was lots of fun. So then, fast forward to the end of that year, which was Christmas. We're now married in a home, so what can we get? Not all at once, a dog, right? And me being a dachshund person, I got my first lo-, uh, dachshund as our married family. His name was Max, he was a long-haired standard dachshund, and we called him Baby Max. Frank used to refer to him as, as the fuzzy watermelon. And every morning, Frank would go to the park and walk Max and meet, meet up with Brian, who would be with his dog, throwing balls and walking around. It was a tr- tradition. And that tradition was kept up with others. Angel, who was a rescue queenson healer, who was a stray living on our streets that we brought in. Oh, quick story, um, they were going to chase it down, I said, no, you just put pot roast behind you until she comes into the pot roast. Um, Lucy, who was a smooth dachshund, Ruby, who was our corgi, who blew hair like crazy, Frank would go to the Capitol and he says, what's that sh-, that coat you have on? Oh, it's beautiful, it's Hart Schaffner and corgi. And then, there was Josie, who's our standard poodle, Chloe, our rescue, who just went to the Rainbow Bridge this, two weeks ago, Annie, another rescue lady, who was rehomed, and to make it short, there are nine of these dogs that are in the Rainbow Bridge waiting for, with Frank. And I'm sure he's going to be smiling if this goes through, thinking about all the fond times he had walking his dogs, and they're going to be howling. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, there's one.
Three minutes.
You sure?
It already started.
Bob Shogren, uh, fifteen ninety-five East Chaparral Drive, Casa Grande, mayor, city council, staff, thanks for this opportunity to speak on behalf of this nomination. Uh, after Frank passed away, Frank was one of the charter members of our Daybreak Rotary Club, and was, uh, solid every time we ever had a service project, he was there, including the desert cleanup south of Casa Grande Mountains that led to the, uh, trail building in the mountains. And I remember in specif-, specifically one day, where he and I and his dump pickup, or his dump, uh, trailer that he had, we went around the, the desert and filled that trailer up with discarded tires, enough to fill up a giant roll-off dumpster, I mean, one of those giant ones. And he was in there just slugging away just as hard as anybody. Um, but he has been, uh, a big part of our Rotary Club. I think it's acknowledged that he's been a big part of our community, our county, and our state, and he's been a champion for education, the environment, healthcare, energy, water, and the judiciary, uh, you know, among lots of, lots of other things. So, um, after he passed, we were looking at what we might do to really kind of honor his legacy and the idea that came up to rename College Park after, after, uh, Mr. Pratt. So, that's where the, that's where the, uh, recommendation, that's where the nomination came from, and we sure hope you vote favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else here would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public portion of our meeting and call for resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number five five zero three, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing a park name change from College Park to Pratt Park.
Mayor McFarland, sorry. I would move for approval of, uh, resolution number five five zero three to change the name of College Park to Pratt Park.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please Gloria?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. I was trying to think of something clever, but I, I'm at a loss, I'm at a loss for words. All right, we'll move to item L two. This is also a public hearing, consider approval of resolution number five two seven three point one eight. And, uh, Mr. Gagliardi, is this your, your deal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Is there a way to start the PowerPoint presentation? There we go. Thank you. So, uh, there's actu-, actually two agenda items that I would like to cover in this one presentation, if that's okay. I understand they probably have to be voted on separately, but-
Sure.
Um, they're both dealing with a request by Arizona Water Company for a water treatment facility at Overfilled Road. They're requesting a minor general plan amendment to place the property from Phase Two into Growth Area Phase One, and they're also requesting a zone change. So there's five acres of property that sits at the northwest corner of Lakeland Drive and Overfilled Road, just to give you an idea of where that's at. Um, it sits about halfway in between Cottonwood and Quartzon. And they're proposing to develop a pretty substantial water facility on these five acres. It's going to have, um, a variety of different equipment and treatment vessels, as you see on the screen. And in order to accommodate the facility with those numbers of tanks and whatnot, they're requesting a zone change. Currently, the property is zoned urban ranch, and urban ranch does allow water treatment facilities with the approval of a conditional use permit, but the setbacks and development standards imposed for urban ranch are, uh, more restrictive than, um, would accommodate this type of facility proposed. So their request is to place the zoning into R two, which is traditionally a, a more dense residential district, um, more so than the urban ranch district, but, um, the idea behind the R two is it has less restrictive setbacks in order to accommodate their, uh, water facility proposal. However, in order to entertain a zone change to R two, uh, city council must also first consider a general plan amendment from Growth Area Phase Two to Growth Area Phase One. This type of amendment is minor because they're not changing the land use category. Um, the property sits within neighborhoods, which supports either the urban ranch, well, actually, it doesn't technically support urban ranch if that were proposed today, but it does, uh, does support the R two zoning. And then, as I mentioned, uh, currently, this site sits within the Phase Two Growth Area. Basically, all property, uh, in this area of town north of Cottonwood is in Phase Two, um, but with this approval, it would make an island basically of Phase One, uh, affecting this five acre site. So I first like to talk about the mid-, uh, the minor general plan amendment criteria, uh, because as I mentioned, you'd first need to consider an approval, uh, to the general plan amendment before you could consider, uh, zone change. In order to consider a general plan amendment, these five criteria have to be addressed, and staff and planning commission agreed that these five criteria were met. Um, predominantly, the, the issue with Phase Two is it's those areas that are further from, uh, existing infrastructure and from city services, and they're identified as property that isn't quite ready for development, uh, like Phase One would be. The reason why this five acre site's appropriate to be considered a Phase One site is, as a water facility, they're generating their own utility, so water resources isn't a concern. Uh, it's a very low activity facility, even though it does take up all five acres, it's going to be relatively, um, access minimally. It doesn't generate a lot of traffic, and so, there's not a need for a lot of calls for service to that site. And, uh, we are recommending, or planning commission, rather, accepted, um, staff's recommendation to, um, forward approval for the minor general plan amendment. Um, and like I mentioned, if you're supportive of that change, then I'd also like to talk about the zone change review criteria to place the property into R two. Um, zone changes are subject to, uh, three specific criteria that deal with compliance with the general plan. Um, and we've found that these three criteria were met. Uh, basically, the, uh, applicable element that I want to speak to is that we really should link land use decisions to known available water resources, and to manage growth to ensure that essential infrastructure is available concurrent with new development. This facility, if able to be constructed, will actually help with, um, augmenting our water supply within the city, in that it'll, um, be connected to, uh, distribution lines and will be designed ultimately to serve several in-town, um, developments. The other criteria is that it would, uh, zoning would be appropriate if it conforms to the general plan. Um, because this is intended to be a water facility and not really developed, uh, as an R two zone in the sense that it allows multifamily, um, this is an appropriate zone change. Um, it, it will not yield a density that wouldn't be supportable for this area. One of the conditions that planning commission is recommending council consider is a restriction on the zoning that it does not allow multifamily development. But it would support a water facility. Um, planning commission has contingently approved a conditional use permit, subject to your approval. Um, should this ultimately not develop as a water facility, it would develop, it would allow single-family home construction, but as does the current zoning of urban ranch. And the last criteria is that a proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. As I mentioned, this will help facilitate Arizona Water Company to develop the site, uh, which will help the residents of the city because it'll, uh, provide more, uh, water resource. This did meet all the required notification set forth by the city code, and staff did not receive any comments as a result of the notification. As I mentioned, planning commission did hear this. Uh, they considered it at their December first meeting, and they unanimously moved to forward a recommendation of approval to council on both items. And as I mentioned, you would first need to, um, make a motion on the minor general plan amendment, and then, um, you know, assuming the outcome of that, then there'd be, uh, the need to discuss or make a motion on the zone change. We are, uh, recommending the, the condition, as I mentioned, about multifamily development being prohibited, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, um, not ready for the public hearing yet, but when we do the public hearing, can we do both, or do we need to have them separate?
Yeah, you'll need to, uh, conduct two separate public hearings because they were noticed as separate public hearings.
Okay, all right, so we'll do them separately, but we, and we'll vote separately, but we can discuss them to, right now. Okay. Does any, council have any questions on this? Yeah, Matt?
Uh, I saw in the staff report, and I looked, you still didn't have any comments from any neighbors or anything? Is that still true? It's kind of funny because it talks about serving with water, but it is the water, so.
It's kind of funny because it talks about serving with water, but it is the water, so it's a good place for it.
It's farmland that's been owned by a developer. That's why you're not getting any comments. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. We'll open this on item L2. This is on the minor amendment to the general plan. Anybody here who would like to address the council on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll call for resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution Number 5273.18. Excuse me. A resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030 as adopted by Resolution Number 5273 and as previously amended by changing the land use designation from Growth Area Phase Two to Growth Area Phase One for approximately five acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of Lakeland Drive and Overfilled Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5273.18 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next, we'll open the public hearing for item L3. This is a zoning change, ordinance number 1178.430. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council on the zoning change? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call for the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 1178.430. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to multifamily residential on property generally located at the northwest corner of Lakeland Drive and Overfilled Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance Number 1178.430 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is L4. Again, a public hearing. This is a consider approval of ordinance Number 1178.036.2, which is amending a zoning ordinance Number 1178. Planning Department?
So this is also a zone change request for nine acres of property located off of Hannah Road, just to the south and west of the former Trammell Crow Building, west of Sunland Gin. There's been a number of zone changes the past couple of years in this area. Few years back, all of the property within the city limits on the south side of Hannah were in an urban ranch zone, and that was pretty much a holding zone that was established at the time of the property's annexation. It was destined to be rezoned ultimately to accommodate uses that were more appropriate based on its location. As you see, it's right next to the interchange of I-10 and I-8. And so this nine-acre piece of property sits right in between two other I-1 properties. That CR that you see also to the west and east of this proposed property signifies that they're subject to conditions of record. So the request this evening is to place this property into I-1, which is a garden and light industrial zoning, with the similar conditions of record that are imposed to the properties to the east and west. Those conditions of record are primarily for compatibility with the fact that it is near the interchange and near the southern gateway to the city. It just asks for a slightly greater landscape setback that would otherwise be provided for the area of the property right next to I-8, and it deals with screening of materials. When reviewing zone changes, it's subject to three criteria that are requiring compliance with the general plan. Staff and Planning Commission found that these three criteria were met. This area is within the commerce and business land use category, which does support the I-1 zone. And as part of the zoning, we are recommending, one of the conditions of record does address the fact that ultimately, 40 feet of additional right-of-way will be needed. And we would normally get that at the time of building permitting, but this condition would allow the city to obtain the right-of-way prior to their building permit if it's needed to help accommodate another project, say further down the road where additional right-of-way would be helpful. So as far as the public notification procedure, we met the requirements of the city code, and this one also received no public comments. Planning Commission did hear this request at its December 1st meeting, and they did unanimously move to forward to council a recommendation to approve this zone change request, subject to the conditions of record that are found within the RCA and staff report and on the screen. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions? All right, I don't see any questions from up here, so thank you, Jim. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to item L4. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please step up. All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance Number 1178.36.2. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to garden and light industrial on property generally located in the southeast of Hannah Road and west of Sunland Gin Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I have moved for approval of ordinance Number 1178.036.2 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the last item on our official agenda is L5. This is also a public hearing. And this is to consider an ordinance Number 1178.431. This is amending a zoning ordinance also Number 1178.
There we go. All right, good evening, council. This site is located at the northwest corner of Main Street and Hermosillo Street in the downtown area. The zone change request is from B4 to B3, which is the downtown zoning district. The site is currently considered legal non-conforming. However, any additions must comply with the existing setbacks of the B4 zoning district. The B3 zoning would allow for zero-foot setbacks and best aligns with the current footprint of the building. There are three review criteria staff looks at, the first being this consistent with the city's general plan, including goals, policies, and other elements. And goal one is to develop a strategy for downtown development, redevelopment, and adaptive reuse. And one of the action steps is to encourage the conversion of vacant and/or underutilized sites to be more, to a more intensive urban use. Rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land use densities and intensities within the range identified within the general plan, and the requested zone change to B3 is inappropriate zoning code, zoning district for the downtown land use category. And finally, the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. The zone change to B3 is within the downtown land use category and will allow for the existing site to be in conformance with the zoning code. With regards to notification, staff met or exceeded those requirements set out in the city code and did not receive any comments. Planning Commission, on a 7-0 vote, recommended city council approve the zone change request with the following condition of approval, and this is the normal right-of-way condition. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions? Bob?
Just what brought this about? I'm kind of curious if there's something that's proposed for that location, or...
So that may be able to speak a little bit on this, but there was a building permit in review with some additions that didn't meet the B4 setbacks.
Okay.
So for the B4, the front setbacks seem to be 35 feet, and then sides, 15 feet, or a corner side would be 25 feet. So it just doesn't quite align with the downtown area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Seeing none, then I will open the public, it's a public hearing.
Let me get the public hearing open.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if you're interested in speaking on ordinance Number 1178.431, please come up, state your name and your address, and remember, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jean Henderson. I have a box address. I'm at a special place right now. My box number is 10061. I've been here for about three years. I lived on the reservation areas and worked there for a long time. My question is, when I'm reading about this, and you're saying changing the zoning from community services B4 to central business, are you going to, are you going to, talking about gentrification at all? That's been my concern, that I see a lot of things around town, and the business is changing, and I don't want to see gentrification happening here where people are going to be losing communal areas to businesses. That's just my main question is gentrification. Like up in Seattle and a whole lot of other places where land for people is lost.
So this zone change to B3 allows, the reason for this zone change is to allow for zero-foot setbacks for the, because currently, the building is, has zero-foot setbacks and doesn't align with the B4 zoning district. In B4, you need a 35-foot setback in the front, so that's considered legal non-conforming. And any addition that the owners would want to do would have to meet the current setbacks of the existing zone change. So rezoning it to B3 allows more flexibility in what the property owners can do with their land.
But which property owners? Because this says zoning from community services B4 to central business B3.
Yeah, B4 is what is called community services. It's really like, almost like a light industrial zoning district.
It doesn't necessarily mean that there are community services operated there. It's just a name.
No special restaurants or buildings or anything like that?
No, it's really almost like a light industrial.
And special restaurants can go into a B4, too.
Okay, okay, that's just what I need to know. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please. State your name and your address, first.
My name is Renzo Corre. I'm currently helping out Mrs. Polvita with this project. I guess just a little bit more, I guess, background to what's going on. She wanted to construct in an existing building, trying to make it more used out of it so that people can come to the business. She's making an assembly hall out of it. So that is why they needed the zoning change for it, to allow for, like Ms. Jaclyn said, to allow for better setbacks for it, zero setbacks, because it already has zero setback anyhow, and any addition would not be adequate enough or sufficient enough for the site itself. So yeah, thank you for all the help with this. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, then I'm going to close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance Number 1178.431. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from community services to central business on property generally located at the northwest corner of Main Street and Hermosillo Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 1178.431 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, last item on our agenda is our reports, so I'm going to start to my right. Bob, you want to go first?
Yes, sir. Employee Service Awards Luncheon is on the 19th. I think there's going to be several of us there. But anyway, I'm planning on attending that. And also, Central Arizona Governments will be meeting on the 25th in Apache Junction. I'm planning on attending that as well. And I saw the information presented in Mr. Rain's update about the community dues and what the intention of CAG is. And I will carry that with me to that meeting and report back.
All right, thank you, Bob. Lisa?
Here we are on a Tuesday because yesterday was Martin Luther King celebration. And of course, we had a great event yesterday celebrating Martin Luther King. We had to adjust some of the activities, but ended up being here in the city council chambers and had a great group and a lot of energy from Councilmember Edwards. He definitely energized the crowd. But I also wanted, again, to thank Councilmember Lavender for the years that he's put together the march, the unity march. Last week, Thursday, was a great event, once again, Jeff, and I just want to thank you for bringing that group together to celebrate that day. We have a couple of things going on. The homeless point-in-time count is going to be next week. If anyone is interested in participating, there's a training on Monday at 9:00 at the police, the police department. You have to go through training if you want to participate in the count. The count is actually going to be three days this year. I think they're starting on the 25th Wednesday here at the council chambers, and we'll have a group that'll be going out, and then we'll be doing a couple hours for those couple days. So really important to get this point-in-time count with our homeless because, of course, it determines funding for the homeless. The homeless coalition met last week. We have been talking about changing the name because there's so many other things that this group does besides homeless. And so I know the mayor and Don and I met months ago and with Mary Lou Rosales, and we decided with the group approving to change it to the CG Helps Coalition. The group did, however, want to make sure that our main initiative is homeless because that is really what it is. But we know, when we talked, that we needed to promote the activities that this group is doing with the CG Helps Resource Center. We want to use that name and be consistent in promoting all the efforts and so many different things. We're going to, the mayor's working with Larry on determining a study session so we can kind of give an update on where that coalition is. The Chamber Award Center is next week, and of course, all of us here know how much Scott McEwen does in the community, and he has our direct lines to all of us and city staff, and he will...
And Mark Miller.
He is so well-deserving of this award as the community service award this year, so he will be getting that award on January 27th. The Faith Alliance is meeting this Thursday, so if anyone would like to attend, Casa Grande Alliance, Bob Shogren will be... Bob Shogren will be presenting. And then we will also be presenting the update on where we are with the homeless, the I-Help, which is the Interfaith Homeless Emergency Lodging Program, where we are with that. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Mr. Levener?
Well, thank you, Lisa, for the comments on the Unity March. It was a great event this year. It was our 18th time, and so this wouldn't happen without the excellent support of Jeff Mahler and the community services who are organizing this event, also the Casa Grande Police escorting, closing the streets, their volunteers in doing that. And Mr. Murray did a wonderful job welcoming the students, and Anthony did a great job keynoting it, and Pastor Juan as well. So we look forward to keeping this event going strong moving forward. Also, at the Chamber Dinner, not only we recognizing Scott McEwen, but also one of our former council members, Steve Miller, is being inducted into the Casa Grande Chamber Hall of Fame. So congratulations to supervisor Miller on that. And I enjoyed the Penalt County Partnership Breakfast on Friday and listening to Mr. Rains and four of our other county managers, or city managers within the county. And Larry, I give you kudos for being humorous as well and seeing that side as well. I think you got a little ways to go to catching the guy from Aracopa.
Okay, Larry is modest, though, I like that about Larry.
So, but no, Larry, you did a wonderful job, and it was educational to see that all the communities are dealing with some of the same issues and hiring good and qualified people. So I appreciate you inviting me to that.
All right.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone again for helping with the youth commission tonight. It's a lot of fun. As you can tell, the future is bright. Also, the commission has a long history. It started by Donna McBride and Carl Peterson, who was a city council member at the time and has grown over 20...
Coming up 20 years.
20 years coming up. So, you know, it's just kept going on and getting better each year. So as you can see, they've got a lot of stuff planned and a lot of stuff going on. The street fairs this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, should be beautiful weather. It's full, new plans, you know, new street schematic this year, and lots of cars, so it'll be cool. Wear a little jacket, but it won't be raining, so that's the important part. And then next Wednesday at the Rec Center, the Chamber Business After Hours hosted by the youth commission. So they're actually hosting it, providing the stuff, and they will have their presentation, so that'll be a lot of fun.
5:15.
5:00, well, 5:15, yeah. But then everyone will get there by 5:15. And then the Chamber Awards Dinner next Friday. Hope to see everybody there. And also the Kramer family being honored and Giddens Tire Pro. So it's a neat little awards ceremony at the property, 6:00 PM next Friday.
Donna?
Well, the one week that I'm going to be gone, everything is happening that you guys all mentioned. I just wanted to mention also, kudos for the home show that was out at the airport. The Chamber did a great job, and city staff did a really good job. Congrats to Dave out there. When I was out there before I left, the entire parking lot was full of cars. So it was just a really good partnership, and it really highlighted the airport, so I was happy about that. Larry did do a great job at the Penalt Partnership Breakfast, and I was a little amazed at how humorous they all were, too. I was at Coffee with a Cop this morning, and they did a great job. Also, the mayor and I are working on the 25th anniversary of the mayor's reading program, so we're going to be kicking that off with the teachers and the kids in March. And I just wanted to mention, I know that, you know, the rain always does havoc when we have events. And as I was driving around town, trying to look at all the flooding areas, I was really impressed. Kevin, your staff was out there with the barricades really fast. There was a, I mean, there was a lot going on, and I was amazed at how many places were already taken care of. And I know people sometimes complain about, you know, look at the roads, you know, what's happening with them. But some of our roads are older in the area, town are older, so we just have to be patient. But I do appreciate your staff being out there, working on that, so, thank you.
Piggyback off of Donna, the art show, car show out at the airport was amazing. Me and my wife was there, we enjoyed ourselves. Also, I did a training on last Wednesday and Thursday for Thrive, and this is the second year they have Thrive, I believe. Councilman Lavender, I know, they helped at your school as well as the middle school. I went through the training to teach this year, so I'll be going into the schools to help teach and educate our teens if they're struggling with stress or going through any issues. So I went through the training so I can participate at our schools with that training, and I look forward to doing that. Also, wanted to say to Councilmember Lavender, great job with the Unity March. That was my first time being able to march with the students. We had over 1,000 students. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful job with our police blocking off the roads. I even saw my brother working and blocking our roads. So it was a great, it was a great, great event.
Yes, you saw him working?
I saw him working, you know, and you don't get to see that all the time. But anyways, I have to say this, too. Of course, we had a lot of rain from Martin Luther King. We had council some events, and we moved it in-house here. And Larry, Steve, thank you so much for all your work that you do behind the scenes. We moved everything in-house here and was able to throw some things up on the PowerPoints and things like that. It had a wonderful event, although we had rain outside, the unity continued on inside. And I'm so thankful for all the work that goes on behind the scenes, even Mr. Councilman Lavender in holding meetings. So thankful for that, and just the opportunity to serve and to work in our community as we continue to grow and grace and in the knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, lots of stuff going on in our community. Matt, again, happy birthday. And just keep an eye out, we are rolling out some changes to our website. You'll see it, it's a company called Civic, well, part of it is called Civic Ready. There's a couple pieces to it, where you'll have an option to opt in, where we will send you emergency notifications that are city-specific, road closure or emergency of some sort. It's an opportunity for the city to help communicate back out to our constituents and be more touchable. You get to dictate what you want to get from us, what information you want to get, and how you want to get it. It can either be via text, or email, or a phone call. If you're an elderly person, you can sign up for it, somebody can help you, and you can actually get a phone call at your house. And I shouldn't say that elderly people are the only people who have phones, but talking landlines now. So, but those are the options that we'll have for people to receive direct information from us. And I'm hoping that everybody signs up for it. So I'm going to be on the, that'll be my mission here for the next three months is to get everybody signed up. We do have, there was a bunch of stuff last week. I went to the Wright Asphalt Open House, which is here, but it's too late because it was last week. And then obviously, I attended most everything that everybody else was talking about here, so I won't repeat all that. But I will say that the Unity March is always one of my favorite events, and it was a great, a great deal. We had our first transit committee meeting last week as well, and they got to hear our attorneys.
Open mini-vlog?
What did the kids call it? I think it was hazing. I've never heard it called that, but I like that. That's a good term, I'm going to have to remember that one. The closest thing to hazing that they've found. I also tended the Missing Too Much School. It was a education convening that was up at Helios up in Phoenix last week. I kind of welcomed the group and then got to participate in the program. There's a lot of talk right now about that, about kids who are missing, the kids that we lost during COVID. And so we're trying to figure it out, trying to figure out, how do we get them back? So that's definitely on our radar. And then this week, this is the second week of the legislature, so I wanted to give everybody update on the legislature. They are at it again, and they already have introduced three bills that attack our revenues. One of them is a food municipal tax exemption. That would be about $182 million to cities and towns. To us, it's about $4 million. And that's about, did you say 10% of our revenue, Larry? 9.8% of our revenue. So if you know anybody, it's HB 2061. Tell them it's a bad idea, please. And then the next one is residential lease, again, municipal tax exemption, and it's $190 million. And I don't know what that number is for us. But it's a total of about $412 million of lost revenue to cities and towns. And none of that revenue impacts the state because the state doesn't collect any of those taxes. It's all cities and municipalities. So it's kind of like, oh, well, we can cut those taxes because it doesn't affect us. That's what the legislature does. And telling you, they're not our friend. Hopefully, none of them are watching. And then there's a corporate income tax, and there's also municipalities partisan election, which actually is not bad. It's just to give common law cities the option to have partisan elections if they want. There's only one in the state, and it's Tucson, and it's because of their charter. Our charter says we're nonpartisan, is that correct, Larry? Or does it not say anything about it? Sorry to cut you off guard. All right, well, let's not consider it anyway, so. Anyway, there's a lot going on, and I'll continue to monitor our friends at the legislature. It is a full-time job, I'll tell you. Again, don't forget the street fair this weekend. And then we have ours. Well, actually Congressman Juan Siscomati is going to be here this week, so we're going to have an opportunity to meet him and talk to him a little bit. So that's enough for me. I appreciate it, you all, and thank you for your service. And Larry, thank you to staff. You guys do amazing job. We can't tell you that enough, so, thank you. Meeting adjourned.